The gloom of national neglect you have already been paid for. Come out of the shadow of irrational prejudices. You owe no racial debt to history. The blood of our bodies and the prayers of our souls have bought for you a future without shame, bright beyond the telling heart.
Kwanzaa means access. It means access to your soul. It means access to your people.
Kwanzaa is like renewing your annual membership to community, to your family, to your culture, and most importantly, to yourself.
Kwanzaa is expressed throughout the world now by people of African heritage who want to have that cultural connectedness.
These are principles of what we supposed to be doing 365, you know what I mean? And how we treat each other and how we look at the world.
We did not petition or ask for permission to celebrate. We did it by Kuji Jacquelea, self-determination.
Made in Flint is proud of us. I'm Sophia Taylor and I am made right here in Flint, Michigan. Born and raised, rehabbing the hood, and I'm proud of it.
This is Gary Jones coming to you live from downtown Flint, and I'm made in Flint and proud of it.
My name is John Wood. I'm made in Flint and proud of it.
I'm Laura Paddock. I'm making it in Flint and proud of it.
I'm Molly Paddock. I'm born in Flint, I'm making it in Flint, I'm staying in Flint, and I am proud of it.
Hey, Dwayne Younger, chilling out down here at the Buckle Valley Fest. Made in Flint and proud of it.
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 Hey, I'm Josh Herman Mirable, creator of Stuken of the Monster, and I'm made in Flint and proud of it.
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 My name is Shandricka Moore, and I go to evangelistic church. Made in Flint and proud of it.
Because we don't have anybody on the Board of Review now.
Okay, all right. So, so is there, in the First Ward, do you have an appointment in the Second Ward, Jackie?
Yes, I need a person.
But she's just not gonna be there, correct?
Right, nope, she's moved.
Okay, so you got a vacancy.
I have a vacancy.
Do you have anybody in mind to fill that seat at this time?
No.
Okay. Councilman Sargentson, do you have anybody in mind to fill your Eighth Ward?
Uh, yes, I do. What was the name?
Alan Griggs.
Alan Griggs.
Is that in the Eighth Ward or the Sixth Ward?
Eighth Ward.
Eighth Ward, okay.
Um, he's a, he's an engineer.
What we do is we'll probably take, we'll probably let the public speak, and then we'll digest this and think about it a little bit.
Okay.
And revisit it at the end.
That's fine.
But also, Mr. President, I do have a clarification question, if you can help me out. To my understanding, what is the process now for the First Ward? Will there be an election this year to?
Yeah, there will be.
Yeah, this year.
Okay. Could you explain the process to the public, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So they can have an understanding? Because I was, I was under a misunderstanding myself, so maybe if they get some clarification to how this process is gonna unfold for the First Ward.
Okay, in accordance with the Charter, Mrs. Croomes will now fill the unexpired term of former Councilman Lloyd. His term would have expired November of 2013, so therefore, her term will expire at that time as well, as will other council members. In that regard, and traditionally, and historically, we've always had petitions available in the Clerk's office mid to late January of the year of UOL's election for individuals to pick up if they want to run in a respective ward for office. Also, in accordance with the Charter, the person running in that particular ward would have to gather 100 valid signatures of registered voters in that ward, turn them into the Clerk's office, and so forth. And there, the primary election would be held in August of 2013, with the general held in November 2013.
Right, thank you for that. So I was, I was, I didn't want people to think there was gonna be a special election after this point. So, what Mr. Del Maroni?
If, if I could further indicate, according to the Charter, the Charter indicates that where there is 12 months or less remaining in a term of office, that the council shall appoint a person, thus the, what happened tonight. Where there is more than 12 months, then there would have to be a special election. So in this case, we avoided an election because there was 12, 12 months or less remaining.
Okay. Thank you. Don? I, I'd just like to respond to Chris Del Maroni's comments. I, I, as you know, Chris, I work in the office with Del Rico. We work in the same office. And, you know, we report to the Regional Director, Norwood Jewell. Neither Norwood Jewell nor myself knew that Del Rico Lloyd was going to resign when he did. There was conversations earlier in the year about the emergency manager making appointments, not, not on the City Council, but like Hurley Board and Planning Commission and all those things. And I know that I, along with other of my colleagues, including Councilman Lloyd, was concerned that if there were vacancies, that those vacancies would then be filled by the emergency manager. Now, I don't know if that played into his mind of why he resigned when he did, but I can honestly tell you, he did not tell me, nor did he tell my director that I worked for. My director called me and wanted to know what was going on with Councilman Lloyd, and that's when I found out that he actually resigned. So, I don't know that there was any pre-planning on Councilman Lloyd's part, because it surely wasn't shared, and you know who he works for, so, um, okay. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is the Reverend Freelon Threlkell. Reverend Threlkell.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chesskin, one, two. My name is Reverend Freelon Threlkell, Jr. I presided 214 East Pulaski in the First Ward. Been in that ward over 50 years. I came tonight to observe again the political process that's going, that has been in our community, and I'm disappointed in the results, not so much as the person, but the process. I stayed out of the picture of the political arena. As a Baptist preacher, we usually don't intertwine, but we have some great Baptist preachers, the Jacksons and Jemison's, and throughout our city, the late Dr. Robbs, Dr. Avery Aldrich, because we're concerned about the people. And I heard a statement today that most of our politicians, they're elected into a position by the people, but then, once they get in position, it becomes a personal power position. I just left Nashville, and they taught us in leadership training that whatever position that you have is either your ministry or your position. And if it's your ministry, then you give all your all for the cause to the people. We had a forum in our ward, and some people came and said, "Let's get together, and let's don't have a repeat like we had in the past," of somebody appointed and not really representing us as a people. We had that forum. Several candidates came out. We set up three criteria, basically, and I just happened to be the facilitator and moderator. And we looked at leadership ability within the community, we looked at integrity of the individual, and then we looked at commitment. And as we observed and listened to the candidates, those three things went through my mind. That night, I had a candidate already in mind, but we did not elect or appoint or even make a recommendation. But early before that forum, I heard through the grapevine that it was gonna be another lady on this council. I heard that. But we didn't want this repeat as we had in the past, least we could as a community we could recommend to the council that we liked this person. But we didn't even do that. We had that much respect for the council to do the right thing. That's why this hall is empty. Because they already knew it was a done deal. In the barbershop, what we call the country club, it was a done deal. That name, I, I wasn't familiar with that name. I knew Tyrone, but I didn't know this other young lady. And I've been around First Ward, I've seen her now, who she is, but I've been around in the religious community, the business community, the schools, and I haven't seen much leadership. She's real quiet, and that's good, but I haven't seen much verbal leadership out of her. But I just simply say this: We allowed another big mistake, and that's why we are here, Mr. President, in this situation in Flint, because two years ago, we could have stopped this whole mess. But we in Flint, this council, you that are elected, you dropped the ball again. You dropped it again, and you just dropped it tonight. But election time is coming, and we, the people, we gonna fill this auditorium. Not only that, we gonna get out and vote. And that's why I say we allowed you to drop the ball. As a Baptist preacher, I'm gonna be praying for all of us, because that's what it's gonna take now. I'm from the, from, from, from the President, all the way down to the Governor of this state, and right down here to you councilmen. And I just say, "We allow the ball to drop." But there is hope, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. A.C. Dumas. Mr. A.C. Dumas.
I believe he left.
He's gone already?
Yep.
The next speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, Council. My name is Quincy Murphy, and before I get into what I came here tonight, I just want to congratulate Claudia Croone for her appointment tonight. I've been coming to council for some years, and over the years, I've always, you know, because it's unfortunate that Claudia got to get the short end of the stick because she was recommended by Del Rico Lloyd. But over the years, as I've been coming to council, I've always seen Claudia in the corner. Y'all know sometime when I'm running around in the back, I'm back there talking to her or something. She's always been a humble person. I think she's gonna serve great on the council. It's just unfortunate that she got to get bashed like she been getting bashed, and that she been going through this ever since she been recommended for Del Rico Lloyd. But I think us as leaders, as Christians, we owe it to her to respect her and respect her position as the First Ward City Councilman, and like they say, a new election coming up. If y'all don't like the decision the council made, y'all got every opportunity to either run for office or appoint somebody else that y'all want to appoint. So I just want to say congratulations to you. When I came here tonight, for a couple of years ago, you guys approved me two grants. One grant was for $60,000, and the other one was for $108,000. The $60,000 was for the youth employment, and I brought the youth here before you guys before, and we did a lot of things like maintained over 400 properties. Our goal was only to maintain 50, but we did more than that. I also got a grant for $108,000 during the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This grant was to help teach me how to become a developer far as buying and purchasing and rehabbing homes, because a lot of times, if I write a grant myself, they say I don't have the capacity. So we went up under Salem Housing, and this grant has been awarded to them for 2000, since, I think, late 2010. Now, I was to shadow them to learn the development process. I've been completely out of the loop out of this. The HUD came and did monitoring visits at the house on April and June. I was not there. A contractor's probably been awarded. I did not learn nothing. So if a grant come up, or opportunity come up for me again, and y'all asked that question on the application, "Do you have the capacity or the leadership ability to do these different type of certain projects?" Then I don't have the capacity or the leadership skills because I never was taught. So then, therefore, I would eventually get it denied because I need to go up under someone that have the fiduciary experience. I don't have a problem with that, but what I have a problem with is if I write a grant and collaborate with someone, and then they get the grant, and now I've been told in the last two months, they done moved the money to help them finish up their projects on Garland Street. And I think that's one of our concerns, that we buy, we writing grants or money is being moved south, and I don't have a problem with that, but how you gonna just take something away from us? I've been working in this community for over 20 years, and this was one of my first opportunities that I was gonna be able to take a project and learn how to do it, but now that somebody moved some money, and when we look at the contract, and I gave you a copy of it, Scott Kincaid, and you can make copies and share it with all of y'all. I have the contract that says Salem Housing and Garfield Bunch Community Service Corporation. It don't just say Salem Housing, so I don't know how they will be able to get the authorization to just discuss or move with anybody, whether it's Mike Brown or Tracy Atkins or whoever in the Community Development Block Grant, just to make a decision to move a grant that just because they the fiduciary, they have the right to move something that they didn't write the grant for. And that's what I'm, how can we be going to agencies, y'all want us to work with them? And I love Salem Housing, I think they do good things in the neighborhood, but the trust is not there no more. We received another grant from the Roof Mop Foundation that we didn't get for $6,300 to support us. So every time we write a grant, we don't have the capacity. Then when we find agencies, and because they don't have money to pay Paul, they wanna rob Peter, and I'm not Peter. So hopefully, in the near future, when we write grants, we can be able to work together, because I want to show y'all that we could do a good job over there in the neighborhood, and everybody just not doing nothing but complaining in the neighborhood. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Quincy. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our final, our final speaker is Ms. Nyira Sharif. Ms. Sharif.
Good evening.
Before I get into, like, what I was gonna get into, because I kinda came in during the first speaker stuff, and the reason why I was tired is because I'm planning for the massive movement building that's gonna be happening tomorrow in Lansing. But one of the things, when I first heard about this whole appointment process, because I'm a process person, and one of the things that the United Nations and other organizations, when they talk about good governance, it's transparency, that's one of the principles, actually, of good governance. Also, accountability is another principle, and, like, I just hope that, like, everything that we do, we should aspire to being open and transparent, and, and making sure that we are accountable and we hold ourselves collectively accountable. And that was one of the things that, you know, that was so distasteful and important about the Public Act IV, which is the Emergency Manager Law, because, no, those decisions were not transparent, and, no, we cannot hold them collectively accountable for the things that they did. So I, I think that, from what I thought I heard by I was listening to the audience, that there's gonna be some, I mean, everything has consequences, and some of those consequences may be y'all seats in, in November, people who are unhappy about, you know, what happened here, and it just remains to be seen if, if people have historical memory when it comes time to either pick up petitions or for the primary elections in August of 2013. But one of the reasons that I, and I kinda alluded to a little bit earlier, tomorrow, there will be thousands, and hopefully, maybe a million, being ambitious, of people who will be descending on Lansing, and to really support our union brothers and sisters who are, where really we are fighting for our way alive, and, and because of that, there are many constituency groups, people of faith, women's rights groups, LGBT groups, and the larger progressive movement that will be in Lansing, hopefully, for sustained protests between 8:00 and 3:00. And there, I mean, like, even though we are in the midst of our, of the right-to-work tsunami, there are multiple other things that the, the legislature's trying to ram through at the last minute on lame duck, one of which would be attacking our democracy once again with the passage of Senate Bill 865. Now, this is the repackaging of the Emergency Manager Law with some extra bills and whistles. And Eric Mays and I went to Lansing Thursday to testify at one of the, the House Committee meetings. We did not get a chance to testify because, once again, when it comes to transparency and being open, the legislature as a whole, well, the Republican half of the legislature, it remains to be seen. And I was actually in Lansing during that period of four hours when the state police barred the public from going into the building to actually see what the legislature, who we were collectively elected, to see what they were doing. And the fact that you have the state, and I'm using state, the state in all the Marxist terms, and all that entails, and using militarism to take away the rights of the people, that's something that I've never seen? I mean, I've never, I mean, I've seen it in other places when it comes time to protest, and it seems that's something that happens more and more, you know, especially during the Occupy movement and all these other things. And I really hope, I know that there was civil disobedience training over the weekend, and there will be some people who are planning on being arrested tomorrow, but I really hope that the state, in all that entails, does not treat its citizens like the other fascist regimes across, across the pond and in the Middle East and in other countries. So I just wanted to say that there are buses leaving Flint, and if you wanna ride a bus, get at me after the meeting, audience. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our speakers for this evening. We have no resolutions at this time. I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I was gonna just get to that. Let me, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 19th, at 5:30 here in the council chambers. And Councilman Neely?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kincaid. Up on my review of the Charter, as it relates to Claudia participating in the Review Board tomorrow, there's no conflict of interest that I can see here in the, in the Charter that would prohibit her from participating in that process. If it's the matter of having a quorum and having those documents approved by that timeline, by the state, I see no conflict of interest inside of the Charter that would preclude her from participating in that role and responsibility as a finishing up portion of the Review Board portion of her career. And I think that would probably resolve the issue of trying to find a, a quick replacement to it, but there's nothing stated in there. Josh, I can see you looking, but it's 1-6-04, conflict of interest. And if we had an attorney here, we probably would be better suited to make that determination.
Mr. President? On page 33, 7-202B, says the Board of Review shall consist of one resident of each ward appointed by the City Council. No member of the board shall hold any other public office or public employment except that of noted republic.
Say it one more time, what, what section was that, Josh?
7-202B, she cannot serve on the Board of Review.
Can that process be postponed, the scheduled for tomorrow? I believe it's up by state statute.
State statute.
Yeah.
Yes, a citizen, Josh, but it doesn't say that citizen cannot be a councilperson.
Public, no public office in the second sentence.
We have a dilemma as far as making sure we have a quorum for that body.
Claudia, let me, let me ask Claudia. Claudia, is there anyone that you know of that would like to serve on the Board of Review that you could make a recommendation tonight that we could vote on?
To serve tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
To serve tomorrow?
To serve tomorrow and the remaining?
Tomorrow is, we'll wrap up the 2012 tax year.
Right, but we'll also need someone to serve in March when we do the regular?
By then, someone will be appointed in March.
I'm sorry?
By March, someone will be appointed.
Oh, you will appoint someone by March?
Yes.
Okay.
So do you need me now to just throw out a name for tomorrow?
Well, if you know who's gonna be serving in March?
Why come they can't serve?
I know, you know what?
I know you just got here tonight, so.
Just let me say this, there, there've been a lot of accusations of backdoor deals, you know, and all this garbage. I didn't know until the votes were taken that I was gonna be appointed tonight. I was contacted Friday as to whether I would be there tomorrow on the Board of Review, and I told them, yes, because I didn't know, I had no idea what was gonna happen tonight. Now, if you just need somebody to finish out the 2012 tax year, which will end tomorrow, I can give you a name.
Okay.
But that person doesn't have to turn in a resume or be sworn in or any, okay, I can give you a name.
The, 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 it'll, the person will have to be sworn in.
When?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
But this is an appointment by the City Council, and you can appoint anyone that meets the criteria of the Charter that lives in the First Ward to serve the remaining part of your term on the Board of Review. So if you have a name, we can vote on that person tonight.
Okay, I can give you a name. Gary Harrison.
I'm sorry?
Gary Harrison.
Gary Harrison. Claudia Croone has recommended Gary Harrison for the First Ward to serve on the Board of Review. Is there support?
Support.
We need an address, if at all possible.
Gary was here, I think he left. I don't have his address.
He, does he live in the First Ward, though?
Yes, he does. He lives on Orange Lane.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll get his address in the morning, okay?
Okay.
And then we'll prepare the resolution.
Mr. Chairperson, I, I think I'd like to get clarification, though, from Councilperson Croone. You want him only to serve for tomorrow?
Yes.
Only?
Yes.
So therefore, and we've done this before?
Right.
The resolution would be worded in that respect, so that when you bring back the, another name, even if it's his, you know, for the March Review, it'll be worded a little bit differently. So it's just for this one time only?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and supported to support Gary Harris?
Harrison.
Harrison, I'm sorry. Gary Harrison to the Board of Review representing the First Ward for the Board of Review meeting tomorrow. It's been moved and supported. Roll.
Okay, just one second, I need to see where I left off.
First vote.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Wayhill?
Yes.
Mr. Sargentson?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Ms. Croone?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no for Mr. Harrison.
Okay. Now, Councilman Sargent- Now, Councilman Sargentson, I believe you have a vacancy. Is there someone that you would like to appoint?
I have a gentleman, his name is Alan Griggs, but I don't know how to get ahold of him. I don't know how to get ahold of this gentleman. I could probably get ahold of him tomorrow, but I don't even know where to look for him.
The meeting starts at nine AM precisely in the morning. And will only go until twelve o'clock.
Well, we should have enough then for a quorum, so. Right? Anything else on Board of Review? Okay. Are there any additional speakers by council members?
Well, I have a question.
Okay, Councilman Neely, and then Councilman Lawler.
Yeah, question as it relates to the Human Relations Board. We did receive a order from the emergency manager that the space that was previously obtained by the Human Relations Board is being now occupied by the Master Planning Committee. There was no further communication saying if the Human Relations was still gonna share space or occupy that space, or if they're gonna be relocated to somewhere else. And I think it's important, only because of those individuals, residents, that may be coming to the city of Flint that has a need for the Human Relations Commission to handle some of their business. We need to know where to send them. Was there any other indication that told us where the Human Relations would be moved to and/or if they will be sharing that office?
Not to me.
Okay. Well, in the event, let's send a referral to the emergency manager, Mr. Ed Kurt, just asking him if the Human Relations will remain in that office and/or if they're gonna be relocated to where so we can make sure residents find the additional help that they may need by that body. Thank you.
Okay, I'll recognize that and order that referral. I will make this comment, that I come in the back door and walk through the basement every day when I come to City Hall, and that they're cleaning out the offices in the basement again. You know, the downstairs basement, all those offices are being cleaned out. I couldn't tell you who's moving in them, but they are cleaning them out. So that's a possibility that somebody, or they may be moving in that area, which I think is a travesty. Because when people come in for help, for their water bills, for fair housing and for everything else, they need to be in the front where Human Relations is located so that they have direct contact with the people. I'm not saying they're moving in the basement. I'm just saying they're cleaning out those offices in the basement.
Right. And just a further statement on that, Mr. Kincaid, is that council used to handle all space in City Hall during non-budget cycles. And this activity was done by the emergency manager without approval from this particular body. The move was deemed to be financial because under PA seventy-two, they only have financial authority. So they deemed somehow to move the office space for Human Relations to be financial.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anyone, oh, Councilman Lawler, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna make a final statement regarding this process that happened today because I do believe that transparency was not made clear with the public and the choice and the process and how the individual was chosen. And as I spoke with Ms. Kroom before during the interviewing process, she seems like a very nice lady, always has a very pleasant smile. I have recognized her in the chamber in the past. And we've smiled at one another and greeted one another with a smile. I have nothing, absolutely nothing against Mrs. Kroom. And I'll give her all the support that I can as a member of this council so that we can move this city forward. So it's nothing against you, Mrs. Kroom, that I, when I make these statements. But I'm very disappointed in my colleagues, some of my colleagues, in that how can you have a fair process and select a person when you have not been a part fully in the process? When you have not heard from all of the individuals that has come forth and to be a part of the interviewing process? You can't. You just simply can't. And then to not even take consideration, when I handed out the letters to the members of the council, some of them didn't even look at it. Didn't care about the recommendations from those four that participated in the interviewing process. You, the city of Flint and the First Ward deserves much better respect and transparency regarding this process. Now, we all, on this council body, we decided on November twenty-sixth at our regular council meeting when we would actually hold the interviews. And then, looking forward to this date, when we would then vote to make the approval. We all agreed on that date. If the date was not good for that individual or any individual that did not show up, I think it would have been incumbent upon them to make that known to the rest of the council. We have till December fourteenth to fill the position. So we could have had special meetings, we could have, we could have done a number of things to include everybody where no one was excluded from the process. But it's just deeply disturbs me that some of the members of the council didn't give the respect of the public to be a part of the interviewing process. That's just totally disrespectful to you, the citizens, in the